Yeah, how are you?
Seems like there's a lot of people in the parking lot. Is there something going on besides this? There's nothing like super exciting on the agenda, is there? Or like, are people showing up for this?
I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that was like, oh, that's gonna be.
I don't think so. Not that I could think of.
Maybe people just accidentally were getting.
Hi, Mark.
Good evening, ladies. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hello.
Doesn't look like much has changed in the council chambers, other than a few new members.
Yeah, alright.
Castle, that's funny. CJ, how are you?
Good. I did. Yeah, I was gonna ask you, um, I mean, what are, is anybody else going?
Oh, Steve and the conference. Yeah, Steve is going. Ben is going, myself, Dennis.
Oh, so, yeah.
Steve signed up for the one mobile work truck where you walk, like the middle one.
I was thinking bike might be kinda cool.
Okay, I just, I was registering and then I'm like, oh, you have to pre-register for these, so I'm like, okay, I gotta send them. Wants to do one of these.
What is the deadline for letting you know that, like, soon?
Um, I mean, we could wait all the way up till when the only concern would be like hotel rooms.
Yeah, okay. I'll let you know, like, we're leaving for, I'm gonna miss the next council meeting.
Okay. Okay, by Friday. Okay, sounds good.
Carrie, I have to tell you, the uh, sound is terrific.
Is it good?
I mean, it sounds, it's as if I'm sitting right there.
Good. I was hoping it would sound better this way.
And your, your voice also sounds pretty good. We brought a whole, whole chambers.
Yeah, I had a, I had a P and Z meeting I went to or attended last night via Zoom and it got moved from the council chambers to the fire station because of the election. And of course, the acoustics in a fire station are never good. It was, it was bad at best.
Yeah.
This is literally like I'm sitting right there in the corner in my usual spot.
That's a good thing here.
Working on a mustache, or it's hard to see, though.
Yeah, a little bit. You know, I got the, I went fishing to Canada a couple of weeks ago and I had to look for parts, so I just haven't shaved it off. Lisa hasn't yelled at me yet, so we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Everything else going good, Mark?
Going really well. Uh, working remotely seems to be doing fine. I'm, uh, back in Cedar Rapids next Monday and Tuesday, and then I come back to, uh, Eau Claire, and then I'm back at Cedar Rapids most of the following week too, so I get down about every three weeks.
That's good.
My forearm isn't used to the manual.
Are you guys supposed to get more storms tonight?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think so.
Yeah, we've been getting about every, every other night. I think they're predicting them again for us, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's about as green out right now as it's been in the last three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the best my yard's looked in. Since I built the house, actually.
Problem is now you gotta mow every three days.
Yeah, for sure. And the gnats are horrible.
They are up here, too.
Yeah, no, it doesn't look like much for rain.
That's good.
They have, yes.
Wait, 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 wait. Mark is on Zoom. I hope we're getting half rate for this.
I'm not, I'm not charging for travel tonight.
Okay.
Ignoring you, just waiting for you to like be out and about.
Carrie, can I start showing up to all meetings so Amy could abuse me? I miss it so much.
I know you miss it.
Carrie emails me today and says, Mark, are you coming for the whole meeting? I said, of course, I miss my family.
Where are you at, Mark? Are you at traveling or?
No, I'm in Eau Claire.
Okay, what, what are you doing in Wisconsin?
We moved here.
Why?
At least I gotta, she's the dean of the School of Business for University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, so.
Okay, well, she, so she left you and I?
Yes, she, well, actually, she retired at the end of last year. She was there long enough to retire and then she started a new position February 1.
Okay. Well, how, how's the weather up there? Is it good or?
Weather's nice. It's, uh, I was just telling these guys, I think we're expecting more storms again tonight. We've had a lot of rain this spring. Um, everything is super green. If there was a drought in western, central Wisconsin, it's gone, which it kinda appears to be that way in Iowa, too. So maybe the aquifers will refill.
Hopefully. Probably still need a little bit more rainfall of that.
Do I need to stand for the mayor?
Uh, yes, do it now.
All rise. Steve, how are you?
Good.
Mark's on Zoom, that way he doesn't have to sigh heavily at you.
If I would've known he was gonna be on, I was gonna, I should've dressed up better.
Hey, I, I, I did wear a sport coat tonight, just in case.
Having been in that situation myself. Right, you don't get them back.
Yeah.
By the way, the last time I was in town, which was about three weeks ago, I drove, I drove by the new fire station. Wow, that really looks nice.
Yeah, it does. Coming right along.
Are you gonna commute for the ribbon cutting or the official opening?
I haven't been invited yet. When is it?
Be determined.
Probably still looking by the time I get through the punch list, uh, first part of August, mid-August. Maybe, I could be back for that.
We got about a minute and a half left, so.
Pete Robb is, yeah, I believe so.
So about two weeks after we moved up here, I got a notice from Lynn County that I'd been selected to serve as a juror.
My wife just was as well, but she, uh, when it came down to like, two days before then, she, they didn't, they didn't select her. She didn't go to voir dire. She just doesn't get chosen.
Yep, yep. I think most, I think most people that serve on a jury find it a, a pretty good experience. I, I think what most of them will say is, I'm glad I did it. I hope I don't have to do it again.
Twenty-five seconds.
Check out this.
There's my brother's birthday.
Happy birthday.
He would be seventy-four. This is the Hiawatha City Council meeting, June 5th, 2024. Call the meeting to order at 5:30. And if everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, please.
Jeff Cader.
Here.
Ben Fidler.
Here.
Joe Weigle.
Here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Here.
Approval of the agenda. Need a motion to approve agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Oppose, same. Agenda approved. Number five, approval of the consent agenda.
Also move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. Alright, moving on and along. Number six, citizens input. Is there anyone in the audience who cares to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Welcome to come to the podium. Right, hearing none. Number seven, report from council members. City manager, anybody got anything to report? Think, kinda quiet.
Did we wanna comment on the, the meeting we had with Marion on Thursday? Okay. Uh, we, Steve, Mayor Dodson, and I met with, um, the leaders from Marion, um, and Robbins, um, is also in, and, uh, to, to discuss with Joni, Senator Joni Ernst people, the Tower Terror, Tower Terrace Expansion. Uh, was a good meeting, definitely. I think we underscored the need that Tower Terrace is vitally essential to both the development of the community and for relieving traffic congestion on the existing, uh, infrastructure and roads that we have. I think we received a fairly positive response from Senator Ernst and kinda highlighted that the project really can't be built without federal money. Um, and so we'll see where that goes, but I think it was an overly positive.
It was a very positive. Anybody else? Okay, number eight. Proclamation. Whereas the city of Hiawatha recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2024 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, plus LGBTQIA+, Pride Month in the United States and celebrated throughout the nation. And whereas the month of June was designated as Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June 1969 and are recognized as the beginning of the LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement. And whereas, all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. LGBTQIA+ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas, the Constitution of the United States calls upon every generation to create a more perfect union. And that, as a nation, we are committed to the principles of liberty and justice for all. And whereas, the state of Iowa, which has had a long history of advancing civil rights, recognized in our state motto, our liberties we prize, our rights we will maintain. Being the third state to legalize same-sex marriage with the unanimous Varnum versus Bryan decision by the Iowa Supreme Court. And whereas, the city's value statement commits Hiawatha itself on being the metro area's most welcoming community to live, work, and play. Our village is making a path for creativity, diversity, and opportunity for all. And whereas, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, plus communities within Hiawatha, the Cedar Rapids metro area and throughout the state of Iowa, have made an indelible impact upon the quality of life. Pride Month serves as a call to all people to persist in the fight to eradicate prejudice and discrimination everywhere. Now therefore, it be resolved, I, Steve Dodson, mayor of Hiawatha hereby proclaims the month of June 2024 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. Date is 5th day of June 2024. Alright, number nine. Juneteenth. Whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, setting a motion to end the slavery in the United States. And whereas, the Civil War ended with the surrender of General Lee at Appomattox Appomattox Courthouse on April 9th, 1865. And whereas, this news reached Texas when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston Bay with Union troops. It was on June 19th, 1865 that he announced. The people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with a proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. And whereas, celebration at, of the end of slavery, which became known as Juneteenth, is the oldest known public celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the successes gained through education and greater opportunity. And whereas, on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each of us of the pre- precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity, which are at the core of the American dream. Now therefore, I, Steve Dodson, mayor of the city of Hiawatha, do recognize June 19th, 2024 as a day to commemorate, commemorate Juneteenth and urge all members of our diverse community to help further the promise of freedom and equality for all by supporting and promoting this proclamation. Date is 5th day of June 2024. Alright, number 10. Public hearing on the matter of adoption of the amended and restated Hiawatha Urban Revitalization Plan for the Hiawatha Urban Revitalization Area. We'll open the public hearing at 5:37. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the item? Please state your name and your.
CJ Glenn, the 206B Avenue, uh, Hiawatha, and this increases the inferable. I kinda wanna understand better, because I live in one of the, Iowa, one of the areas. But you don't really understand it, um, so I'm just curious to learn more about it and see how all this goes. You know what I mean? If you guys have some educational thing or stuff else later that's good, I don't know.
Okay, uh, John or Dennis, do you wanna?
We can meet with, with CJ after the fact, if, if you'd like, and, and let you ask as many questions about the, the revitalization plan in, in the areas. Sure, no, absolutely.
Alright, thank you, CJ. Anybody else? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of the item? Have we received anything in the mail?
No, we have not.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing at 5:39. A, consider resolution adopting the proposed amended and restated Hiawatha Urban Revitalization Plan for the Hiawatha Urban Revitalization Area. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cader.
Aye.
B, consider resolution approving updated application for tax abatement under the Hiawatha Urban Revitalization Plan. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cader.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Number 11, consider resolution fixing date June 19th, 2024 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Pex Landing LLC. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cader.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Number 12. $2,300,000 sewer revenue capital loan note, series 2024B. A, consider resolution appointing paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cader.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
B, consider resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the issuance of capital loan notes and providing for a method of payment of the notes and approval of the tax exemption certificate. Need a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Jeff Cader.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 13, consider resolution approving the purchase of furniture for the fire station number two project. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Got a first and second discussion?
I was surprised at how much difference there was in the pricing. It seemed like for the same furniture, we'd have bids closer together, but I'm glad we got the low bid.
Right. I think there was a spread over $11,000, I think, in that.
Talked about it earlier, but it's exciting to see that we're getting to the step of needing to buy furniture for.
Right, yeah. And I think, what, six to eight weeks to get it in, so. That's good. Roll call, please.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cader.
Aye.
Number 14, consider resolution approving the purchase for the park security surveillance cameras. In a motion to approve resolution?
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? I think it's a great thing, uh, to have those cameras up there, and I know we're waiting on Turtle Park till we get wifi up there, uh, for that. But, uh, I think that will also improve safety, uh, and also let us know if any vandalism or anything like that happens, so we can get right on it right away.
And Kelly, aren't you able to see that, you think you're, it's a real time on your phone, that, I mean, at any time? Just kinda nice.
So this is probably a question that nobody has an answer for, but you know, when the fiber is supposed to get to Turtle Creek?
Wait, it's to the wellhouse, um, or the, uh, the, the water facility out there. It's been in the CIP for a couple of years. I'm just not a hundred percent sure. We are exploring other options rather than waiting on fiber to get cameras out there. There might be a dual purpose, um, use of cameras and connectivity between the police department and parks in the interim, two years or so till we get it out there. So we are continuing to explore that.
Is fiber getting out there contingent on a third party bringing it to the wellhouse, or is it?
No, I, I, I believe, uh, I believe there's fiber close enough. It, it's just our portion to get it into the, the wellhouse. It's just our portion to get it into the, the wellhouse and actually down Fitzroy.
Roll call, please.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Number fifteen, consider resolution setting a public hearing date, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty PM to consider amending Hiawatha Code ordinances, chapter forty-seven, park regulations, statute forty-seven point zero-three hours. In a motion to approve, first and second?
I'll make a second.
Got a first and second discussion? I think it's great that we're going to start at six AM, and then with, you know, the other municipalities nearby, they all close at ten, so. Yep. Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Number sixteen, consider resolution setting a public hearing date, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty PM on the submittal of a community, community development block grant, application for the city of Hiawatha Dolls Climber Thire Water Main Improvements Project. In a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a first and a second discussion? Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number seventeen, consider resolution approving change order number one for Springbrook Drive sanitary sewer extension project. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Notice they have to dig a couple of feet deeper just to get the lines in. Roll call, please.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number eighteen, consider resolution approving change order number one for Twelfth Avenue and Boyson Road intersection improvements project. Need a motion to approve and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye, sorry, couldn't find the mute button.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Number nineteen, consider resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for the Iowa Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Improvement Program, TSIP, for the intersection of Boyson Road and Boyson Court to reconstruct the intersection to a roundabout. In a motion to approve?
I moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Number twenty. Consider resolution approving site plan design guideline located at twelve hundred Boyson Road. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Number twenty-one. Consider resolution approving site plan design guideline for the property located at nine oh five Tower Terrace Road. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a first and second discussion? Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number twenty-two, consider resolution approving sidewalk deferment and landscaping deferment for the property located at nine oh five Tower Terrace Road. In a motion to approve and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number twenty-three, consider resolution adopting a public purpose policy for the use of city funds for meals and recognition. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a first and second discussion? I think it's a good thing, you know, just, you know, help recognize people and also if they have to work past a, a normal meal period, it'll be reimbursed or be able to to pay for that. Roll call, please.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Number twenty-four, consider resolution adopting a petty cash policy. In a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Was there anything that kind of spurred the creation of a petty cash policy, or is it just?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, auditors are, auditors' notes, uh, two years ago, two years ago, indicated that we needed, we should have one in place. So as to head that off in any future audits, that coming back up, um, we put this forth.
I think it's a good, good policy. I just, uh, was somewhat surprised that we hadn't had one prior to now.
Yeah.
Do we have a dollar amount? For the fund? Right. Okay. Roll call, please.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Number twenty-five, consider resolution authorizing city staff to proceed with solicitation of proposals for employee benefits brokerage and consulting services. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I think it's a good idea to, that where they can shop around to get us the best deal for for insurance and stuff. Roll call, please.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Number twenty-six, consider resolution approving the city of Hiawatha employee wage and salary schedule for FY two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. In a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a first and a second discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have potential conflict of interest with my wife being employed by the city, therefore I will abstain from discussion and voting.
Thank you, Ben. Any others? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
All right, number twenty-seven, possible closed session as per Iowa code twenty-one point five J to discuss the possible purchase of a, of particular real estate.
Make a motion that we go into closed session.
Got a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jeff Cater.
Aye.
Ben Fidler.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Joe Weigle.
Aye.